Evening everyone and welcome to Covert Avenue School. I want to extend a warm welcome to our Board of Education members, Superintendent Small, District Administrators, staff, and families joining us here tonight. We are proud to share our school with you and to honor our veterans together as one community. It's a true honor to host tonight's Board of Education meeting here, especially to celebrate such a meaningful occasion, Veterans Day. Before we get started, I want to highlight a few safety reminders. There are emergency exits, as you see on this side, as well as on that side of the gym. So we're not going to have one, but in case of an emergency, obviously, we're going to exit through these doors and do so in a calm manner. At this time, I invite everyone to please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance and remain standing for the Star Spangled Banner performed by our show choir under the direction of Mrs. Turk.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I'm sorry, please remain standing.
(Choir singing) Can you see by the dawn's early light? What so proudly we hailed at the twilight's last gleaming? Whose bright stars and bright stars through the perilous fight? For the ramors we watched were so gallantly streaming? And the rocket's red glare, the bombs bursting in air? Came through, through the night, that our flag was still there? Oh, say, does that star-spangled banner yet wave? For the land of the free and the home of the brave?
Thank you very much. At this time, it is my pleasure to turn the program over to our Board of Education President, Ms. Tiffany Capers.
Thank you, Ms. Gunn. First, I'd like to apologize for our delay. We had so much to cover and it really is never enough time. Please forgive us and know that we do appreciate all of your attendance today. We just had so much to cover. It seems like the meetings come so quickly and a lot to cover, so please forgive us. All right, welcome everyone to our meeting. District Clerk, please note that all Board members are present except Mr. Palmer. Thank you. May I have a motion to approve the meeting minutes of the regular meeting of October 14th and the special meeting of November 6th?
Move.
Thank you, Ms. Battle.
Second.
May I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Ramos. Thank you, Mr. Ramos. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. Do we have any correspondence?
Correspondence has been given to the board for consideration.
Thank you. All right. Good evening, everyone, and thank you again for joining us for our November School Board meeting. We are grateful to have so many families with us, both in person and those joining us virtually tonight. Your support means so much to our school, our students, and our staff. We also want to extend a special welcome to our veterans tonight from post 1033 that are joining us. We thank you for your service, your sacrifice, and the example you set to our children. And no meeting would be complete without us highlighting our wonderful scholars. And no meeting would be complete without us highlighting our wonderful scholars, so we will be celebrating our achievements of our English language learner students tonight. Their hard work and growth is why we are here, and we are so proud of them. So please stay for that celebration. Well, again, thank you all for being here, and let's get started. All right. May I have the report of the Sowanaka Central High School District, Ms. Douglas?
Good evening. As we approach Thanksgiving, we send warm welcomes, wishes to the Elmont Union Free School District community for a peaceful and joyful holiday season. It's a pleasure to share with you a snapshot of the vibrant activities and impressive acknowledgements and accomplishments taking place across our high schools. This month, Elmont Memorial Scholars continue to excel across academics, the arts, and service. Senior Biddish Meneshwa, a proud Dutch Broadway alumni, recently published a children's book entitled "Alex and the Wishing Well," which is available on Amazon. This past Friday, he also had the privilege of reading to our fifth-grade students and really sharing with them the writing and the publishing process. Truly a full-circle moment for a student who went to Dutch Broadway, who is now in our high school, to really exemplify the district's commitment to lifelong learning. The school community also came together for many events, such as the Malloy Health Fair, the senior high drama club's production of Clue, and the middle school's performance of The Lion King Jr. at the Elmont Public Library. My nieces are still speaking about how Mufasa was fantastic. It was truly an honor to see our, and overall, the overall production, to really see the middle school scholars come out and perform. Elmont's commitment to inclusive education was also on display as the school prepared to welcome families of incoming fifth and sixth grade special education students. With spelling bees, pals' Thanksgiving, and hurricane relief collections led by Key Club and community partners, Elmont continues to foster student voice, leadership, and care. At Sowanaka High School, student engagement has been dynamic and deeply meaningful. In celebration of Art Education Week, scholars collaborated on a large-scale art installment symbolizing unity. Our Virtual Enterprise students earned a National Gold Banner, placing them amongst the top twenty-nine firms across the country. Thank you for that round of applause. Let's give our scholars a round of applause. Business students excelled in competitions and behind-the-scenes learning at MetLife Stadium. Cultural enrichment continues to thrive with culinary field trips, community service through food drives and garden cleanups, and student success in national academic competitions. From college visits to creative fundraisers, and from Red Ribbon Week to senior banquets, our scholars are cultivating skills and character in equal measures. At Floral Park High School, academic distinction and student leadership remains hallmark to our school community. Seven seniors have recently been awarded the prestigious LIU Presidential Scholarship, each receiving full four-year tuition scholarships. Congratulations to those students. The school hosted its inaugural Career Day, bringing professionals and alumni together to mentor 10th grade students, and nearly all juniors participated in the PSAT. In athletics, the varsity boys soccer team earned the Nassau County Championship for the second consecutive year in a row. If you can give them a round of applause as well. While our girls volleyball team finished conference championships. The music department, Virtual Enterprise Team, and National English Honors Society all provided students with rich learning experiences beyond the classroom. With service projects, art exhibits, and academic recognition continuing across departments, Floral Park Memorial is closing the fall semester with momentum and pride.
Thank you, Ms. Douglas. Are there any audience members who would like to speak on agenda items only? Okay, Mrs. Superintendent?
I'm so happy to see so many of you here, so thank you so much for joining us. Tonight's board meeting is indeed a very special occasion. It's a night where we will celebrate our scholars for their extraordinary achievements. We will celebrate and thank our servicemen, our veterans, for their sacrifice and service to our nation. And we will thank three retirees for years of dedicated service to our school district. Also, we will also celebrate the partnership between our district and community organizations such as the American Heart Association. So what I would like to do now is, on Tuesday of last week, on the eleventh, our nation set aside this special day to thank our veterans for their service and sacrifice to our nation. We're often reminded that we live in a free nation, but we also know that that freedom is not free, and is paid for by the service, the leadership, the courage, and the sacrifice of those brave men and women who serve in our armed forces, and also their families who support them during their time in service. Last Tuesday, the Elmont community came out in its numbers for our Veterans Day celebration. I would like to thank our students, our teachers, our parents, members of the board who came out to march in the parade to show our love and support to our veterans. It is now my pleasure to reintroduce our building principal, Mrs. Gunn, who will introduce
Thank you, Mr. Small. This evening, we gather not only to continue the important work of our school district, but also to pause and reflect on the incredible sacrifices of the men and women who have served our country. To our veterans in attendance, including those from our local American Legion, and to the family members of veterans who are part of our Covert Avenue and Elmont School community, thank you. Your courage, commitment, and service inspire us all. At Covert Avenue, we work hard to teach our students what it means to serve others, to be kind, respectful, and responsible citizens. Veterans Day gives us a powerful opportunity to show these lessons in action and to remind our students that freedom and community come with responsibility and gratitude. On behalf of the students and staff of Covert Avenue School, thank you for being here, thank you for your partnership, and most importantly, thank you to our veterans for your service and your example. We are so glad to have you with us here this evening. We invite you to admire the beautiful eagle hanging on our gymnasium wall. Our Covert Avenue students and staff are honored to present this artwork as a gift to the American Legion Post 1033. A special thank you to Ms. Celestin for her creativity, effort, and care in bringing this piece to life. So wherever you are, Ms. Celestin, thank you.[1115.83][1115.83](Applause) I will now turn the program over to Mrs. Cheryl Turk and our show choir as we honor our veterans with a song entitled "To Those We Serve."
(Singing) My country, tis of thee, sweet land of liberty; to thee we sing, to thee we sing; to those who serve, who serve the free; those who stand proud and tall and serve us all unselfishly; with heart and soul they've entered freedom's call; to those who serve, who serve us all. From this great land our heroes hail, putting their hopes and dreams on the road so freedom can prevail; they come from north, from south, and east and west; they are the brave, they are the bravest and the best. How can we ever thank them, mere words will never do; our heroes who serve and help reserve our grand red, white, and blue. To those who serve, my country, tis of thee, sweet land of liberty; to those who serve, sweet land of liberty; to those who serve, oh dear and dear land, little land we sing; they taught us all what truth and strength should be; to those who serve, who serve courageously. How can we ever thank them, mere words will never do; our heroes who serve to save our grand red, white, and blue, red, white, and blue. To those who serve, my country, tis of thee, sweet land of liberty; to those who serve, proud and tall and serve us all unselfishly; to those who serve, with heart and soul they've entered freedom's call; to those who serve, who serve courageously; to those who serve, who serve us all. My country, tis of thee, to those who serve, sweet land of liberty; to those who serve, to thee we sing, to thee we sing.[1382.11][1382.11](Applause)
Thank you so much, boys and girls, for that beautiful performance. Can you take a bow? Take a bow! As our students exit the risers, we do have some cards that the students at Covert Avenue And at this time, after our students distribute and exit, I will turn the program back over to Mr. Small.
It is always hard to say goodbye. And so, I don't think we're going to say goodbye tonight. We're going to say thank you for your service, and we're going to thank you and hope that we will see these individuals in the future. Tonight, we are here to celebrate three incredible individuals who have provided over fifty-four years of dedicated service to our students, our staff, our faculty, the administrators, and our families. And we want to say thank you for a job well done, and we want to also wish you continued success and all the best things that retirement will bring your way. Ms. Arlene Wong, who serves as our senior county clerk in our business office, has served the Elmont School District for over eleven years, and she has now retired. She's not here tonight. We want to give her a big round of applause for her years of service.[1587.53][1587.53](Applause) And we have here tonight Mr. Timothy Cleary. Mr. Cleary has served our district for twenty-five dedicated years as a custodial cleaner. And we often don't give our custodians enough credit, but their work is seen every single day, and what they do does contribute to our main focus of teaching and learning. Mr. Cleary has played a vital role. His efforts have not gone unnoticed as it has directly impacted every student, every staff, and every member of our administrative team every day, in every classroom, in the hallway, and in our facilities department. Through his efforts, our buildings remain clean, our lights were on, the heating systems were there, and I can attest to it because for the last year, he was at central office. And oftentimes, he would come to my office as I'm working in the late evenings, and I need to clean your office, right? He is dedicated. He is meticulous in everything that he has done. And so, as Mr. Cleary retires from our district, we want to tell him how much we have appreciated his work. We want to thank you for everything you've done to ensure that our buildings remain safe, clean, and comfortable for our students and our staff each and every day. So thank you, sir, for your service. We're also tonight going to recognize our district clerk, who is presiding over her last Board of Education meeting tonight. At the end of this week, Mrs. Barbara Gallo will go into retirement. She reminds me each and every day, you're going to miss me when I'm gone. And yes, indeed, I'm going to miss her terribly when she's gone. I have to say this. One of the things that Anna's greatest strength is she is the district historian. There is nothing that you could ask her that she doesn't know. She will remember everything that happened, when it happened, the context behind why it happened, and if I need a document, she knows exactly where to find it. So I started in the district last July, July 2024, and Mrs. Barbara Gallo started her tenure as her district clerk at the same time. And so while she was not new to the district, And so, while she was not new to the district, she was new to her role, and I was new to the district, so we learned many things together. And I can tell you that over the last year, she has been a rock. She's been a solid foundation that I've relied on, and I can also tell you that our Board of Education has relied on her. Anna is meticulous about everything. You want a document to be read. Today, she's got a document that she opened up and said, "I see an error." Like, she knows how to find the most miniscule mistake in something and point it out to us. And those are the things, when someone takes great care in their job, you see from afar and you admire it deeply. So, Anna's journey began over district as a teacher aide. Then she graduated to being a clerk typist, and it is now culminating in the role of our district clerk. She has a deep knowledge of the district's history, our policies, our practices, our procedures. She has strong connections, relationships with many individuals in this district. I can tell you, though, that I have enjoyed and admired and respected her service while I've served as a superintendent. She has helped us to leap into the 21st century with our Board Docs platform. We started using Board Docs last year, and she was instrumental in spearheading and leading us to digitize how the board worked with our agendas and our minutes. So today, Anna, we are sending your heartfelt thank you. We are thanking you for your service. We are thanking you for your dedication. We are thanking you for how you have made us feel, and I can tell you how you've made me feel over the last year. You're loyal, you're dedicated, you're meticulous, you put service, you go above and beyond each and every day. And I will tell you that we will miss you. I know you're coming back to help out and to help with the transition. But tonight, a grateful Board of Education, an even more grateful superintendent, and an entire school community say thank you for your service and wish you all the best in retirement.
Anna, on behalf of the entire school board, I want to extend a huge thank you to you for your 19 years of dedication and service to our district. I'm going to try to get through this without crying. You've been the district clerk every board hopes to have, always willing to lend a hand, always ready to support in any way you can, always committed to doing what's best for our students and staff. And on a personal note, I want to thank you for the encouragement you've given me in my new role as board president. While I'll miss having you up on our side, I know that your family is excited to have you back full-time. So, on behalf of the Elmont Union Free School Board, I wish you joy, rest, and wonderful adventures in your retirement. Thank you for everything, my dear friend.
Congratulations again, Ms. Barbara Gallo. At this time, we would like to invite Jeremy Lees, the Community Impact Director from the Long Island and Westchester American Heart Association, to present a donation to our school district. We would also like to invite Ms. Deborah Bennett, our Physical Education Coordinator.
The Elmont School District gracefully accepts a generous donation from the American Heart Association, which includes six CPR in schools with first aid training kits and six AED trainers, as they are being displayed. This contribution will definitely strengthen our emergency preparedness and expand lifesaving training opportunities for students and staff. Heart health is extremely important, and we get to teach our students how to manage that and how to identify the risks. So, thank you, the American Heart Association.
Thank you. I'm Deb Bennett, the Phys Ed Coordinator, but I'm also the Health and Welfare for EDA, our Elmont Elementary Teacher Association. We are thankful to Jeremy and the American Heart Association for this generous donation. It all enabled us to expose our students to lifesaving techniques and skills. We look forward to continuing our partnership with the AHA. In fact, we are excited to share that we are in the process of planning assemblies in our schools using these CPR kits to address heart health. Thank you.
Thank you so much for having me this evening. It's my pleasure to provide these resources to the Elmont Districts. Southern cardiac arrest can happen anywhere, anytime, to anyone. 350,000 individuals annually experience out-of-hospital cardiac arrest. In fact, just yesterday, there was a student in the Locust Valley District that collapsed on the basketball court, and thanks to those in the crowd, jumped in and performed CPR, administered an AED, the student looks like he's going to, you know, have a favorable outcome. So, we know that these resources will benefit the students and faculty here. God forbid, a situation occurs, people will be prepared to act, so it's our pleasure to assist in that.
Okay. So, in addition to all the wonderful things that we've been doing, no Board of Education meeting would have been complete without us acknowledging our scholars. We're always incredibly proud of our students, their hard work, and their achievements. And so, we also want to thank the teachers and the principals who play a critical role in our students' success each and every day. Tonight, we will recognize our English language learners who have performed extraordinary. And so, I would like to introduce our interim director of English language learning to Ms. Rita Johnson, who will now speak about our students.
Hi, good evening, everyone. Just a brief announcement for Ms. Johnson Presents the Student Awards. Just like we did last year, we are pleased to offer the simultaneous translation devices for our Spanish-speaking parents who would like to hear Ms. Johnson's speech translated into Spanish. I will be making a brief statement, letting them know that it's available in the table in the back. We are also aware that many of our scholars tonight are of Urdu origin or Urdu descent. So, for those parents, we would like to offer simultaneous translation from Ms. Gazala Hyder, my friend and colleague back there waving her hand. Ms. Gazala Hyder will also assist you with Urdu. We want to let you know that as parents, you should feel proud and excited of the achievements and recognition of your children. And if you feel the need to hear the speech in your native language, whether that is in Spanish or in Urdu, the district is more than happy to offer and provide those translation services for you. Now, I'm going to do the brief statement in Spanish. Esta noche nos complace ofrecer dispositivos de traducción simultánea a nuestros padres de habla hispana que desean escuchar el discurso de la directora traducida al español. Si desea recoger un juego de audífonos, por favor diríjese a la mesa del fondo y alguien de nuestro equipo les ayudará. Thank you very much. Gracias. And Ms. Hyder taught me, thank you, in Urdu. Shukriya. Thank you.
Good evening, members of the Board of Education, families, staff, and most importantly, our scholars. My name is Mrs. Johnson, and I am honored to serve as interim director of ENL Services. Tonight, we gather to celebrate a remarkable milestone achieved by some of our multilingual scholars, reaching the commanding level on the NICE slide assessment. This accomplishment represents a significant step in their academic journey. This year, we are proud to announce that 85 multilingual scholars have reached this milestone. Tonight, 64 current students will be honored with certificates for their outstanding achievement. To our multilingual scholars, we are proud of you and excited to see the many successes that lie ahead. Please join me in congratulating these students on their exceptional achievement. Let's give them a well-deserved round of applause. To honor each scholar, we now invite our principals to announce their school's honorees. Please welcome Ms. Rodrigo from Alden Terrace School to recognize the scholars and present their certificates.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson. First, I'd like to call up our outstanding ENL teachers from Alden's Terrace School, Ms. Owiesam and Ms. Jafarren to come join us. I'd like to thank you both for your hard work, your dedication, and your fun, positive energy that you provide our students with each and every day. Congratulations to our students who have tested out of the ENL program. We are proud to share that six of our students successfully met the requirements. Out of those six, three have moved on to the high school, and we have three remaining current students. So, congratulations to Sadutra Actor, Atiya Umar, and Fariah Sajad. I think Fariah's with us today. Congratulations on this wonderful accomplishment. Stay with us, Fariah. And I would like to call up Principal Wallfall and Assistant Principal Ms. Margarachi from the Clara H. Carlson School.
We have 18 students at Clara H. Carlson that exited ENL. So, we have a lot of ENL teachers also, so a special thank you to our ENL team, all of them here. One, two, three, four, five, six of our ENL teachers came here tonight to congratulate their students that they helped throughout the school year, not only this year, but many years, to be able to master their ENL in reading, writing, speaking, and listening. So, congratulations to our students here. When I call your name, please come up to get your certificate. Congratulations to Damian. Gersharam. Some of our students aren't here. Abigail. Eduardo. Amy. We're going to say their names anyway. Congratulations, Camila. Congratulations, Heidi. Jaden. Congratulations to Leia. Laurel, congratulations. Romer. Congratulations to Diana. Ashley. Congratulations to Eden. Mubin, congratulations. Samar, congratulations. Gabriel, congratulations. And last but not least, congratulations to Valentina. A special thank you again to our ENL team. Let's give our Clara H. Carlson scholars a round of applause. And next, we have from Covert Avenue, Ms. Gunn, Ms. Trioni, and Ms. Donahue here. Thank you.
Good evening again. I am so very proud to be able to, thank you, to award all of our scholars. At Covert Avenue, we had 31 students who tested out of our ENL services, and I believe tonight, we have 18 of our students here with us. I want to acknowledge, of course, our fantastic ENL team, Ms. Lizbeth Garcia, Ms. Irina Benini, and Ms. Kaitlin Cortina, and I would be remiss to not mention Ms. Tara Das, who is not here this evening, but thank you for all the hard work that you do. First, we have Carlos Alvarado Mendez. Sheik Ahil. Dylan Diaz. Thiago Flores Cabrera. Juan Garcia Vargas. Daniel Garcia. Sebastian Garzone Estupinan. Steely Jean Baptiste. Fatima Jahanjir. Jude Josie. Avleen Cor. Muhammad Khan. Congratulations. Liam Lopez Matamoros. William Madrid Zavala. William Madrid Zavala. Nia Ann Matthew. Alana Melendez Contreras. Jeremiah Nunez. Luciana Palacios Garcia. Isaac Cavado Gonzalez. Amalia Reynoso Peralta. Yarlyn Ranelles. Floranmi Sanchez. Congratulations. Harmit Singh. Verenderjeet Singh. Mateo Antonio Trigueros. Congratulations. Max Venegas Ruiz. And that is everyone. Thank you. At this time, I'd like to call up my colleague, Principal from the Dutch Broadway School, Ms. Cynthia Kasim.
It's always a pleasure to highlight students who have done above and beyond, and also highlight those who have made an impact to make that possible. So thank you to the families, thank you to the teachers, the Dutch Broadway community. All right, here we go. Oksa Khan. Maryam Abrahami. Carla Jean. Sajda Khan. Alan Mansia Coronado. And Enrique Takuri. All right, at this time, I'm going to ask the admin team from the Gotham Avenue School, Mr. William Mingo and Ms. Farina to please come up.
I could not find the awards. Um, I would like to take a moment to say thank you to two wonderful colleagues for doing such a phenomenal job this year, Mrs. Montoya and Mrs. Luise. We thank you very much. Your dedication and your hard work does not go without notice. I would like to recognize Tamid Hassan. John Carlo Parelles. I would like to ask everyone to please, please give our final awardees and our awardees for tonight a final round of applause, and we thank you and congratulations. Mrs. Gunn?
Thank you. Congratulations to our students, and a big thank you to our teachers, our administrators, and to our parents for your continued support. So thank you so much. We will now move into the approval part of our agenda. Ms. Gomez?
Thank you, Mr. Small. I have one legal item for the board's consideration this evening. I will read the resolution, rejection of RFP proposals. Whereas pursuant to internal auditor RFP number one twenty-five twenty-six, the Board of Education reserved the right to accept or reject any or all proposals, and whereas the Board of Education has determined that it is in the best interest of the school district to reject all proposals, be it hereby resolved that the Board of Education rejects all proposals submitted pursuant to internal auditor RFP number one dash twenty-five twenty-six, and be it further resolved that the Board of Education authorizes the school district to issue another RFP for internal auditor services. Is there a motion?
Moved. Moved by President Capers. Is there a second, second by trustee Battle? All in favor? Abstentions opposed? Passes unanimously. Thank you, Mr. Small.
Thank you, Mrs. Gomez. Intermission? in the interest of time. Members of the board, I seek a motion to approve personnel agenda items five point one through five point two.
May I have a motion to approve personnel agenda items five point one through five point two? Uh, thank you, Mr. Khan, second. May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Ramos. All in favor? Motion carries.
I seek a motion to approve curriculum agenda item fi- six point one.
May I have a motion to approve curriculum agenda item six point one?
Move.
Thank you, Ms. Battle, second.
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Douglas. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. I seek a motion to approve support services agenda items seven point one through seven point two.
May I have a motion to approve support services agenda items seven point one through seven point two? Thank you, Dr. Massey, second.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Ramos. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
I seek a motion to approve business agenda items eight point one through eight point five.
May I have a motion to approve business agenda items eight point one through eight point five?
Move.
Thank you, Mr. Ramos, second.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Khan. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Madam President, this ends my report.
Do we have any committee reports or informational items?
Uh, yes, if I may. Just wanted to announce about attendance to the NISBA conference. Superintendent Small, trustee Lynette Battle, trustee Zahid Khan, and myself, trustee Angel Ramos proudly represented our district at the 2025 New York State School Boards Association Annual Convention and Education Expo, held October twenty-third to twenty-fifth at the New York Hilton Midtown in New York City. The event, the event gathered hundreds of school board members, superintendents, and education leaders under the theme, "Leading with Purpose: Inspiring Progress." Our, over the course of the three-day program, participants engaged in a diverse breakout session covering critical topics such as board operations, safety and support of schools, technology in education, and equity in community engagement. Several workshops focused on priority, priority areas for our community, including inclusive leadership practices, amplifying student voice, and amplifying student, students' voice, advancement in AI, and digital equity, and mental health supports targeted at underserved populations. This popular, this participation allowed the valuable insights and networking opportunities that will inform our ongoing efforts in these domains. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ramos.
And just one more.
Sure.
I'm gonna be using Mr. Smalls's word. I'd be remiss not to mention one of our own World War II vets and teachers, Mr. Jerry Georgi. So I just wanted to acknowledge him today for everybody. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ramos. Uh, we also have Mr. Palmer, who is a vet. He's not with us today. Uh, he had a family emergency, but we also want to thank Mr. Palmer for his service. Do we have any old business? Any new business? Is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak? We ask that you limit your comments to three minutes, and we also ask whether there's praise or problem, you not use any employees' names. Yes, Ms. Hall?
Good evening, everyone. My name is Claudine Hall. As most of you know, I'm a lifelong resident of Elmont and a graduate, proud graduate of Clara H. Carlson, and I serve as your civic president in the Jamaica Square area. And growing up, my mother always taught me that when someone does something nice for you, you are to say thank you. So this evening, I stand before you to say thank you for all that you did for our successful first HBCU and Divine Nine event last night at the Elmont Public Library. And I must start with you, Mr. Small, because you allowed the principals to place it on the parent portal so that the children from fourth to sixth grade could come out, and we, I can honestly say, we had standing room only, and I thank the Board of Education, those who came out to support yesterday and spoke. Thank you so very much for what you do for the Jamaica Square Civic Association. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hall. And I also would like to acknowledge our very own Ms. Stephanie Douglas. She was a speaker on, at the showcase yesterday, and it was a great showcase, so thank you, Ms. Douglas.
Good evening, everyone. Sheldon Meekel, Elmont.
Hey, Mr. Meekel.
Hello, hello. I haven't spoken in many months.
I haven't seen you in a while. Good to see you, sir.
I just want to come out and thank everyone, thank you, board, thank you to our veterans, especially, special thanks to our veterans. We wouldn't have the liberties that we have if it wasn't for them. As a father of three, I've gone through the first kindergarten, K through six, three times, and if you're an active parent, you understand what I'm saying. The reason I mention that is because the educators at Elmont Union Free School District have molded and shaped my children. By the time they hit seventh grade, they were independent, they knew exactly, they were ready. So I want to thank our educators for all the hard work and effort that they put in. In particular, the reason I'm a little welled up, seeing my daughter's name in the board agenda and being hired by you guys, as a second-generation Elmont resident, I really, really appreciate that you're giving her this opportunity. Our board members, you guys, are volunteers. I've sat on that side of the table, I know how much work it is, and sometimes it's thankless. We're gonna double your salary?
There you go.
My testimony and to the parents that are remaining and to the teachers that are here are, keep doing what you're doing. Parents, keep showing up, keep, get involved. By the time they get to high school, they're gonna be ready, because we have the finest educators in the, in the United States, as far as I'm concerned. And the passion for education and learning that my daughter has been, has been, has learned from our educators, um, has, has, uh, put her on the trajectory of being one of the future educators, special ed. Uh, she did her undergrad at St. John's, and she'll have her masters in May of next year, so hopefully she'll be continuing on with Elmont. And then again, she's a teacher's aide now, we look forward to her being an educator, and again, I just have such a sense of pride that, uh, my daughter was so inspired by our educators to go on and become an educator herself. So thank you very much. Have a good night, everyone.
Thank you, Mr. Meekel. Hi, Ms. Crick.
Good evening, Chica Crick. Um, over the summer, I asked to meet with all of you regarding the complaints that I have at the Dutch Broadway School, and you all refused, so I'm presenting my current complaint here, being that this is the way that has to be done. Um, my child is still being persecuted at Dutch Broadway School. We're talking about Veterans Day, freedoms, rights, and her personal rights were violated. There is nowhere, anywhere in the country where you can force an individual child or adult to do anything that they don't want to do. And my daughter was lied to, manip-, the teacher was lied to, excuse me. The teacher was lied to, who in turn lied to my daughter in order to coerce her to participate in a class activity that she did not want to participate in.
Ms. Crick?
And what I had to have from my daughter is for her to tell me after school, mommy, they lied.
Mrs. Crick, I'm, I'm not going to stop you from talking, but I do want to ask if you have scheduled an appointment or if you've made an attempt to speak with the superintendent about this first, because we don't have confidential student information revealed.
It's my, it's my information.
I understand, which is why...
I'm telling my testimony.
I understand, and it's your right to do so, but in order to make sure that the issue is properly addressed, I'm respectfully asking you if you have spoken with the superintendent about this, because that would be the proper...
The superintendent is aware. He's fully aware of these events. He's received emails, and there's never a response, and even over the events over the summer, it's always denial. And why I wanted to meet with the board is because I had evidence of multiple things that were done against my child in that school. But what I'm bringing up today is that this persecution chronically at Dutch Broadway started a couple of years ago because I asked this board to put protections in place for sixth-grade parents, because parents were being overcharged for sixth-grade dues. That's where this started, and ever since then, it's been using teachers, using different vehicles in the school to target my child or my children. The decline in rapport is just kind of disgusting at this point. For a veteran administrator, my child is in fourth grade, for a veteran administrator to lie to a teacher, to manipulate my child, to violate her rights, is disgusting. And I don't know at what point this board is gonna actually move to hold administrators at Dutch Broadway accountable. at Dutch Broadway accountable for how they treat, really, my family, because I'm not gonna stop speaking. My children have learned from this school and this district that evil comes in all colors. It looks like us, sometimes it doesn't. And it doesn't matter whether we have the same skin color or not, things are being done because you all are allowing it. And it really has to stop. Another few things I wanted to mention, because Sheldon spoke beyond three minutes, that's discriminatory.
Who spoke beyond, beyond?
Sheldon spoke beyond three minutes. You did not time him.
Your time is over. Your time is over.
Okay, can y'all please clean the feces?
Your time is over.
There's feces at Dutch Broadway School in the yard. Can y'all please have?
Your time is over.
Thank you, Ms. Crick.
Your time is over.
They clean up the feces, and they lock the parents out of the gate in the morning to drop their kids off. It's declining.
Thank you, Ms. Crick.
It's out of control. Please do something.
Anyone else? Okay, our next meeting, our next regular meeting of the Board of Education is Tuesday, December ninth. It will be held at eight PM at Clara H. Carlson School. May I have a motion to adjourn the public meeting?
Move.
Thank you, Ms. Battle, second.
Second.
Thank you, Dr. Massey. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.